Alright, it is six thirty-two, it's time to call this meeting to order. Everyone please stand up for your votes.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands before its head. I am proud that we have this all with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Mr. President, please.
One, please just transfer my question from the real police night and to let core head prevail. Also, may everybody have a very merry Christmas and stay safe out there in this COVID world. Thank you.
Alright, can I just call the roll?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Here.
Here. Mr. Booth?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Okay. Motion, did you, everybody?
Hold on, before we go into the executive, I just want to make a quick, a quick little, I want to thank Mr. Scott, our city manager, for inviting Santa Claus to come through our town. And I'd also like to thank our department for their continued efforts as decorations and helping Santa get through town as well as the police department. Uh, it was, it was a lot of fun and I'll thank everybody involved.
Alright, so we need a motion to go in the executive session.
Motion for an executive.
For personal and legal matters.
We don't have a training?
Well, we got it, so we don't need a training.
We have one on camera.
Oh, okay.
That's the training. And who else are you inviting in?
Scott and Taylor's talking to them.
And?
Tom Spiker.
And Tom Spiker?
Spiker.
Tom Spiker. I got that motion.
Our part, she doesn't believe.
Yeah, she can say.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, we need to roll, all of Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth? Booth? Yes. Joe?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Hey. Motion to go into executive session, Justin, what's your vote?
Right.
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yep. There it is.
Okay. He must have told us that it's out streaming.
No, he's at a ball game, he's at halftime, he's in between two ball games.
Alright, I'm making a loop larger. Motion to come out of executive session. Don't move.
Second?
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Taylor.
Mr. Booth?
Uh, cool, executive session.
You got it. Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Okay. We should have good internet, he's in the school.
I have the same problem, I was getting kicked off.
Yeah.
I had good internet.
It's probably all the children.
Alright. That reception to school is bad.
Is it? There he is again. Good.
Alright, uh, let's go first reading ordinance one oh three dash twenty. Need someone to introduce it?
No.
An ordinance setting the authorized staff in the police department and declaring an emergency. Whereas the staffing in the police department needs to be moderated. Now therefore, it would be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the staffing in the police department is established. Chief and nine full-time officers, one part-time officer and one part-time clerk. Ordinance ninety-six dash twenty adopted on December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to a higher revised code seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so the police staff levels can be affected immediately. To increase police officer staffing as soon as possible. This ordinance shall be in full force and effective upon its adoption. Bill enacted by council on first reading under the rules of seventeen days of center, two thousand twenty.
Any further discussion on this?
Oh, no, yes. Am I first?
Absolutely.
So, I would like to have answers. So, we voted on this one.
Yep.
Um, Trinity, you and Justin were not here and it went with four votes. And then last week, on the second reading, it did not. So now, we only have three votes. So, now that we've changed because everyone is here to vote, I would like to know why.
So, uh, one thing, what had failed was the
Explanation.
The amendment part of adding an additional officer that went through police department and also went through finance. And there was no additional cost, there's no additional cost, it's still within his
Essentially, it's a cheap.
So, uh, that would lead to streamlining a lot of important stuff that frankly would maintain the bill of, if the, if the law goes around. I mean, we spent twenty-seven thousand dollars just alone in January in overtime. So, we have the most to go.
But we do know that when someone's presented anything, we still have to bring it forward, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what we did. And we did, actually, the first time though, it wasn't written properly and there was a miscommunication between Gary um, and, well, however Gary got it, I don't know if that's from Scott, but Gary thought we were just doing away with the charges and it was that he needed towards the initiation and that's not what we discussed in committee. And that's why we tried to amend it initially and failed and we tried to do it under suspension and you need, you know, five minutes or whatever and so, I mean, that's quite a way down. But, you know, this is, we discussed this originally from the beginning and when we discussed the finance, the financial side of it already, when we talked with the chief manager and Taylor and even we showed everybody what we under, what we pre-estimated on the budget already. But not to be any of this a thought to be stated, what we budgeted for his department.
Well, that wasn't some of it because we're going to stay on overtime and, okay, I mean, we can play it. I mean.
Yeah, we, we, well, we will stay on overtime because he's going to go through the overtime program, which is innovatively alleviated. Now, you potentially have a little overtime, this does go higher than what you know, but negative, very little overtime. It's off the radar because it's very current and that's what the panel will say as well.
I get what you're saying, something you can't predict and it like, you know, if somebody was probably sick for six weeks or something like is something you can't really predict and that'll go into the, you couldn't figure that ahead of time.
Well, actually, we'll have to talk because we'll have an extra officer that will be able to fill in because we had, we had one of us on suspension, another one that was out on Andrew, and then we had another beginning, that's three out there and they were really running short.
Let me know when it's time for me to talk.
Okay.
We will.
Done.
Uh, well, first off, I can't believe that anybody on the finance committee would say that hiring somebody does not incur new costs. The salary will be thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars at nineteen dollars an hour with, with no overtime. The P R, the police and far retirement will be seven thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars. The health insurance will be twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, if you add that all up, that comes to about seventy-five or seventy-six thousand dollars, uh, to add an officer. Now, if you, you can't look at the budget and say, well, well, he's going to stay within his budget because if the fund doesn't have the money in it, then what's in the budget makes a difference, you have to cut the budget. So I want to know, and I'm for getting another officer in the police department. But before we do that, I want to know how much money is carried over in the general fund? Because you add Gary Hudson eighty-five thousand dollar bill, when you add the two percent we've already authorized for union negotiations, when you add the fifteen percent increase in health insurance, when you add all that together, is there still going to be enough money to pay another physician in the, in the police department? And we won't know that until we get the final carryover numbers for two thousand twenty. And that's all that everybody asked for was just to wait until we got those numbers. Because I, I actually have looked and looked and looked at that budget, I don't think the money's there. If you get, you get to February and March and if I'm wrong and you can show me the money's there, I'll support it. But right now, I can't support it because you can't say, uh, the money's in the budget, you gotta say the money's in the fund. And we've been running that general fund on a shoestring. Not to, and added to that, we got a lot of extra money this year because of COVID into the general fund. And now we're talking about, well, the vaccine's out, maybe, you know, by, by the middle of twenty twenty-one, COVID may be a thing of the past and we won't be getting that money. So I'm just saying, we gotta be careful, you can't say budget, you have to say how much money is in the general fund because that's what pays police and far. And I don't think there's, I don't think we got kind of carryover to sustain what we're talking about.
Well, we certainly wouldn't have a carryover to sustain the way that the budget was being run in the police department before. All that money that was earmarked as mine items that we did away with to, uh, uh, free up the money for the new officer was all being spent on inappropriate items that weren't needed in the, in the police department. So frankly, I'd say, uh, I'm going to disagree with you here, I think we do have the funds there seeing how we're going, we have someone that actually knows how to use the budget and it is going to stay within the means. I'm going to support it, I, because the reality is, I know that we're going to get our, our value out on what we're going to spend in that department right now, which we weren't getting.
We went a good part of the year where we didn't even fund the eight officers that are in the budget right now. So you got to do it too. And you also, you have to set and consider that we, we set for like three or four months and we had six officers. And now you're talking ten and you're saying, you're talking budget, it's really easy to figure out if you're going to have money. You find out how carryover you got, you find from the account, how much you're going to, how much you're going to get in the next year into the general fund. And then you add that, you add those costs up and you come up with them, right now, it doesn't show it in the general fund. And you can talk all this budget thing all you want, budget just a, just a plan you make to spend the money you actually got in the fund. And I'm not going to support it and I, I, I hope everybody else don't. Because we can, we could do the same, accomplish the same thing in the winter time, the police, the police work falls off in the winter time because people ain't as cold and we could wait till, we could wait till February or March and do the same thing if we got the money. We don't, there's no reason, there's no reason right now to take the chance of running the general fund in the red.
Mr. Smith here, did you hear we lowered the budget by one hundred and four thousand? You mentioned earlier about the family catching that, because the budget is a budget and certain amount of money is earmarked for the police department, certain amount of money is earmarked for the private department, certain amount of money is earmarked for the utilities department. So, the money is earmarked and the money is in there.
If you don't have it in the fund, you gotta cut that earmarks.
Well, if you think that I could have a plan for the end of that, I could tell you that if it was your burden or all, you'd be all over it.
Yeah, you know what, Dan? If you, if you wouldn't be bullying, trying to bully everybody, we've, we've been talking about doing this in February and March. So you, you know, you can, you can spread.
Order, stop order, order, order. Okay. Alright, so. Elizabeth, you have any questions?
Yes, but hold on, we're not done with that, about something. Okay, welcome. Um, so I, I, I'm just looking at this and based off the, the other ordinance that we were going, hang on one second, come on buddy. Um, this looks like because, and maybe I'm not understanding, that there's two more employees in this than the other ordinance because it also includes the clerk. And I thought that when we approved the clerk before, that was getting rid of an officer, a part-time officer, remind me?
Two part-timers, so I think that ordinance has three part-timers available. But we got rid of one of the part-timers and turned that into a clerk's position.
Get rid of another.
We're getting rid of another part-timer and just keeping one part, which is open. The clerk needs five dollars an hour left. Yeah, so.
And I mean, I, I also feel like, and I, I totally feel like we need to staff our police department. But I do feel like Chief Fitch said when we hired the clerk and when we hired, um, when we moved Chris Jones to being a K nine officer and that was going to take him off of kind of a normal potential patrol thing, that he wasn't going to need any new officers. And now, you know, immediately within, you know, a month, two months, we're needing another officer. So my, my concern is just that, I mean, is this enough? You know, I mean, I don't know. And, and do we, do we have the money to do it? Because before we were talking about moving, moving around.
Taylor, do we have the money to do it?
Um, I mean, council, council left to debating that for uses of the following, but I mean, to answer the question on the financial way, the police budget doesn't increase from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, um, with ten officers, with a tenth officer included in this. I can tell you that, you know, it doesn't increase, it would affect, actually do increase, uh, with a, with a, out the tent because of the savings in overtime, um, less pay per hour for the, for newer officers and the younger guys not taking insurance, like many of the folks in these were taking the insurance before.
But that's, that's today, I mean, those people could get married in, you know, two months and, and within, you know, within this year, that insurance cost.
Tomorrow, the world could end tomorrow.
Tony, I mean, I'm asking a legitimate question, I mean, I, to me, you should budget for the maximum the insurance is going to be, not the minimum that you're paying. Because that
I can say in the
Because then once you hire, I mean, yeah, a couple of the younger guys now aren't getting family insurance, that doesn't mean the next guy you hire isn't going to need family insurance.
I think that's accurate, I can tell you that when Fitch asked me to, to work on this payroll number, uh, to see how this would work, we actually included the medical insurance for a tenth officer in this. That's why if you guys look at your budget, you see the line increases for the police department, just in case. I'm told that the impression is that of the hot, of the pool they're hiring from, that this wasn't necessary for certain years. Uh, so I think it is budgeted pretty, um, conservatively, uh, I think is the word. Um, I can tell you that there's concerns about wage increases from any council members that, uh, there is no resolution on labor negotiation, it's a public decision on labor negotiation compared to for anyone involved. But the budget does prepare for labor negotiations. Specifically, we talked, something we talked about, but since it was put out there, uh, I'll mention it, um, the budget does budget conservatively. Um, and the general fund is at a higher standard now than when we started the year.
Do you know what the carryover is going to be, Taylor, in the general fund?
It, it's three hundred and six thousand as of today.
You know what, at the end of the year, carryover is going to be?
I can't tell you on the thirty-first, if I provide you a number, it's certainly going to be dying long. Um, but.
That's all I'd like to see, the carryover and, and the projected revenues and, before we do this, that's all, you know, I don't think waiting a couple of months hurts the thing.
Well, everyone does have projected revenue in their boxes as of Monday. Um, so, if you're helping. I can tell you, I can also tell council that we wouldn't be in an unusual position, I'll speak somewhat as a senior council person, that if the police budget was decreased, it would be the only department in the city, uh, whose budget would be decreased from nineteen to twenty. That would be pretty unusual, uh, for one department's budget to go down and nobody else has to be touched, particularly when revenues in. Um, but, again, that's council.
And say, and the next time you do a study, I appreciate it if, if you do that study, if it goes out to all council so we, we can take and tear it up, tear the numbers apart. I tore the numbers apart all day the best I can and I just, I, I just want to see that the money's going to be there. Uh, things can happen, you can have a, you can have a big emergency happen and have a great big overtime cost you can't, you can't control there. And I just think we need to have some carryover and some cushion money and I want to, I want to see the numbers before we actually do this and you can't, you can't give me the carry, the actual carryover right now or uh, some of the money we got last year during the COVID thing, whether we're going to be able to, you know, play some of them costs off and I, I just think we should wait a couple of months and look at it.
Okay. Alright, um, Justin, do you have any more?
Here.
Okay. Alright, motion, motion to suspend.
You have to see if there's any questions in the public.
Terrible.
Oh, they're up there?
I know.
I thought Scott did them.
Yeah, he's gone.
Okay. Um, terrible.
Do you guys want me to address the, the need for the efficiencies?
Go ahead.
Because I, I don't, I don't feel like, or if I convey the message that we need another officer, I'm incorrect. Meaning, can we get by with what we have? Sure, Greg already said we got one of those six at one point. But, uh, but what, what level of officer safety do you have at that point? Versus how do you take care of your assets and run them into the ground? Chief Fitch went through this, I will tell you, the highest paid employee I, there was a police officer who was no longer here. Eighteen thousand dollars that police officer made in overtime. Um, that's half of what this thing is being cost. You know, so, Fitch was able to take his budget and he discovered that, well, actually Taylor discovered that this was being reported to you while with overtime was actually happening because somehow the payroll system was poor from a front line item. He's living all that out now and part of that is going to be one, one salary line item, also a part-time smashed in there. So, to pay for this, we gave up one part-time officer. Uh, quite frankly, the other part-time officer, we're not running on the schedule, so we're not spending any money on that one. The only part-time employee is being spent on the court. The, uh, between the overtime that was used last year versus not using the part timers, that's how he was able to take the pay cut or the, uh, decrease in budget and still have a tent. And what the tent does is increases the efficiency of the office. So now, when you do have to go out, instead of paying someone who overtime, you can drop a shift to one. Where right now, we already have some shifts where there's only one and if they get sick, then we have to pay overtime to cover that shift. Whereas with the other system, it would be two people, that would be the only, based off the whatever it is, and you'd be four groups. So, plus there's that, you know, bouncing around. So if somebody goes down because they, you know, they, they hurt their shoulder, Chief, that's how, there's the option to run one person on that shift or cut the K nine officer off. Instead of paying overtime, so now he's got flexible, he covers the city without paying the overtime. As you mentioned, there is going to be some overtime, I mean, these guys have it now, just for stabbing. You know, the other day we paid two firemen, the big police officer, they were trying to come in because of the stabbing that happened up on fourth. So, we're never going to get away from that. Um, but I don't want you to think that we're telling you we need this after what was said in class because really this is an efficiency going forward and with the timeline at stake. So even if you guys say yes tonight, the reality is, the officer probably won't even start till the end of January. Just because it takes that long to get them through the medical process and the, uh, uh, background check. So luckily the testing's done, so we got that out of the way now, the civil service testing. So you're looking at a month out before you need somebody here. And if, and the reason why that's important is just because we're black women. The, if we bring them on before all that medical stuff's done and it takes a long time after they're hired till that completion happens, then the city gets fined. We actually ran into that with a police officer from the old regime who was hired in March, April and no one was going to go do his stuff when Chief Fitch, right, he was going to do his stuff and then boom, we got fined because it was so late. Well, luckily COVID was in place, we turned it to three thousand dollars, we got a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Thank you, COVID. So, but as a good practice, we don't, we're not even going to bring them on until all this is done. We'll hold that in the future.
So I have, I have another question and I guess, Taylor, if you can answer this. And, because I'm trying to pull up the budget and I can't get it to come up. I mean, there's still money budgeted in the police department's, um, budget, right, for overtime.
Yeah, so, I mean, the way the payroll system was charging line items is a little confusing and it, it probably requires one-on-one conversation with everyone or not a, not an open council session. But I can show you guys where the police department's overtime this year was closer to eighty thousand, not thirty thousand. Uh, and so, there's that's even, not to get out of the, you're not to get into anecdotal, but there were some times I've been writing payroll checks for over three thousand dollars for one individual because of overtime, um, which is an exceptional, yeah, at a small city like So, the overtime is really, really high and it's higher than what it looks like on paper and I can show you guys where that is. Um, so yes, there's still space for overtime. I think the average percentage of police payroll that was overtime this year, Fitch and I worked out to like nineteen percent or something and that includes the really bad days and the better days. Um, and so next year we budget for ten percent average, um, which would still be some overtime but that would be enough right there for the new person and then there's efficiency. Um, so the overtime situation was really a lot, I mean, we talked about it in the council before, the year, the very first payroll of twenty twenty, the police department used a full fraction of the overtime they needed all of two nineteen. Councilor Taylor was particularly, uh, invested in that discussion back in January. So I think, it's hard to talk about efficiencies out in an open council session without everything in front of us but some of the efficiencies really are quite larger than what they sound, especially overtime.
There's never going to be.
Okay. Emotionally.
I guess that's my question because, I mean, it, it almost, and I just want to mention, we're being conservative enough with the budget because it only takes one crisis event, you know, to completely blow a ten percent contingency out of the water.
Well, well, that's a ten percent contingency on overtime. If he ran ten percent of his payroll for overtime for the entire year, uh, and the normal payroll for the entire year, the payroll budget would still come in under budget and that's how all the departments are scheduled to expect or like the payroll budget would still come in under budget, and that's how all the departments are scheduled, except for like mine, with the salary.
Okay, that's, that's what I need to know, and I, I guess I could wish that we would have gone over the, the budget in more detail, so we understood it, these numbers, because like I said, I tried to look, and it's, you know, the meatball's not there.
Yeah, I can actually go over it more, the, the budget document that Scott and I used, is a lot, it has all of the calculations, and it's very complex, in fact, it's multiple documents, I shouldn't say it's just one, but it is pretty complex, and, uh, I didn't send that out, because I thought it would be a really messy presentation, but if you guys would like to go over it, it'd be absolutely.
All right.
I, I'd like to wait on the final numbers of the year and go over it, and, and make a, make a, ju- just take a, a couple of months to be, be sure and be careful. You can have things happen, like a police officer being shot, you blow the budget completely out of the water. That happened to us one time with an officer, you can have all kinds of things happen that.
Okay, we're done.
Well, call your role.
Emotional on the floor, defend the wall.
Okay. Yes.
Grant, no.
Mr. Booth. Yeah. Yeah.
Um. Um. This is the motion to suspend? I'm sorry, you guys, it's really crackly, and I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Yeah, it's a motion to suspend, Elizabeth.
So, um. Sorry. I'm struggling here, um. Yeah, no.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Good job.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, pass it on secondary. Okay, all right, and then the next one, we have an ordinance. We have an ordinance one, two, dash, twenty, is, uh, not reduced, all right.
An ordinance pending the two thousand twenty appropriations, appropriate, the unappropriated balance, following some, some twenty-three thousand dollars from general fund of one hundred to not, to Police Department line item number one zero zero dash one zero zero dash one zero zero six five, other employee costs. For as the appropriations ordinance needs to be amended to appropriate police fund. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Meltonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The two thousand twenty appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance, follows. The sum of twenty-three thousand dollars from general fund number one hundred to Police Department line item number one zero zero dash one zero zero dash one zero zero six five, other employee costs. Total appropriations are increased by set amount. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law. You will enact by council on first reading under suspension rules on the seventeenth day of December, two thousand twenty.
Motion to, in a council discussion?
Yeah, okay, I, my cut up, permit it, can you tell me what ordinance we're on?
The, the only other one, one oh two dash twenty.
Is that the one that appropriated money for the settlement?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Did he just? Yes, he did, yes, he did. Is there anything else you'd like to discuss of executive session in open session, I'm just curious?
What's quote?
Okay, all right. Motion to suspend?
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes, eight thumbs up.
Yeah, David thumbs up. Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Motion to not, second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Grant, Lewis?
Uh, this president, we, Durham, and I, making work to the, the, regular county, we're coming to, we might, we will plan some things.
Motion?
And? Mr. Smith?
I didn't hear the motion.
I didn't even attend to that.
Well, I, I motion to move our next meeting to twenty-eight to twenty-nine, and you're never going to do Tuesday, because other people have plans. Uh, I have plans on the day as well. Right?
It was, it's the second one since we had a moment in drawing all this. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah.
Can you?
Did you say Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And motion to, motion to burn.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth? I think he's gone. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
I think he's trying to do a thumbs up there.
Yeah, he's got it. All right. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.